Selectmen are returning from a brief executive session. And pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join the Zoom meeting via your computer or with audio and video. We've included the information, the link that you would need to put in your browser on the agenda. We've also got the information on joining via phone available as well. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of the proceedings as soon as possible. The, the recording of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. So let's go around and who, who was on the call with us today? I see we've got Nick, we've got John Schuester, Colleen, Shannon Maxwell, John Wilhelmsen. We've got a couple of Brenda Trainer, a couple of phone numbers. Could you folks identify yourselves?
Bree.
Bree, I see you're on the call.
Yeah.
All right. So is that pretty much everybody? I thought I saw like a Gianna.
Yes, there was for a while.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, so it looks like the gang's all here. All right. So Chief, you're here to talk about the review of the Police Department Annual Use of Force Policy Analysis. So why don't we turn things over to you?
That's my audio. Is that all right? All right. Yep, I'm here tonight. This is a certification and accreditation standard. We started doing this last year, requires that I take a look at all department use of force situations on an annual basis, analyze those and take, take necessary action if necessary based on, based on those findings. We did that last year, submitted that. And this year, what I wanted to do is to get it on the agenda and just have you, give you the opportunity to sort of publicly look at it and accept it or not. And if there, if there are any questions, it's just a, another piece of just the transparency that we're, we're building. I imagine that before too long through reform, this is going to be a mass requirement. It is a certification accreditation requirement. So I also provided a few folks, the, a copy, the selectmen have a copy of our use of force policy, which has been, we have amended it about three times in the last two years, based on sort of current events. I would say that our policy ahead of time was pretty progressive. So the modifications were quite minor. And most recently, the, through the reform efforts, the Mass Chiefs, Mass Major City Chiefs and the Training Council came out with a model policy for Massachusetts. And it was pretty much identical to ours. We did make one further modification on ours, which was merely a definition that they, they used a new definition. And we just adopted that, but really the nuts and bolts of the policy are, we're already in place and they're, they're identical. What you see from that report is it just, I, I list every incident that we had. We don't, it's just very generic as you know, when we don't talk about players, we talk about the, the events and whether the action was consistent with policy and, or whether it, it sort of triggered some other additional review. You know, and this year's report that you have, we had no injuries, no complaints of excessive force, only a handful of cases. And it's important to note that through our certification standards, we define the use of force a lot broad, far more broad than, than folks would think. They think maybe, you know, use of force is any type of laying the hands on, and that's not the case. We, if an officer is called upon to draw his taser, just draw it, that's a use of force. If they engage in a pursuit, that's a use of force. So there's a bunch of other things that we qualify for, for use of force. So this year's report, as you can see, we, I found really happy with what, with how things were handled. I think the officers followed policy. They also showed a tremendous amount of restraint in a handful of occasions. But you do note that one of those was a pursuit situation. Again, because it's a vehicle pursuit, we consider it a use of force. There was, it was consistent, the actions were consistent with our policy. However, that kicked in, we also do annual pursuit review. And we look at every event as it happens, and then there's an annual review. But that particular event gave cause to us to review the policy. And we actually made a modification to our policy, our pursuit policy, based on a review of that incident. So we're trying to stay on top of things and pretty satisfied that, you know, that the crew understands the rules of the road, the rules of engagement, and we've got no complaints of any kind of officers utilizing unnecessary or excessive force. So that's the, that's it in a nutshell. And I wanted to see if the, you folks, if we had any questions or comments on that. And then like to see if you could just, whether accept it or send it back to me for, for edit.
Any questions for the chief?
I only have a comment, which is in these complex times, I really appreciate the openness and transparency. And it's just great to have clear policy and even better to have clear oversight. So I, this is very reassuring. I really appreciate Matt, the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
John? Trainer?
I'm talking, but muted. It's the first time I've seen a use of force review, and I thought it was excellent. I'm glad it's now embedded in the police department that this will just continue on. It was an eye opener for me to read it. I can't comment more than that to say how happy I am that it's now an ongoing document.
Thanks, Chief. I felt the same. It was, after reading your review, that our officers really are, they get it. So it made me feel good that, because there certainly were some situations that, you know, you think this stuff doesn't happen in Plimpton, but it does. So it's nice to know that it was handled so well by our officers. So thank you for providing us with the thorough review. So I'll make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, accept the, the review of use of force review that the chief submitted to us.
I'm glad to second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Thank you, Chief, very much. Did you have any other business with us tonight, Chief? Are you going to stick around or do you have other things you need to do?
Don't, Liz, I don't recall. Do we have anything else?
No, no, some appointments, but they're later on, on the agenda and.
All the appointments, yep.
It's kind of self-explanatory.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Before the chief goes, I would like to make an announcement that in executive session, the Board of Selectmen voted to enter an agreement with Scott Benson to serve as our interim police chief via contract, and that this will be effective 10/4/2021. So that was a vote that was taken in executive session. Should we ratify it in open session? Is there a need to do that?
I'm sure that's a good thing to do.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that the town of Plimpton enter into an interim police interim agreement, or sorry, interim police chief agreement with Scott Benson that will be effective 10/4/2021. He will be serving as the interim police chief for the town of Plimpton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, very good. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Bye.
Good night. Okay, so are we just going to go through the agenda as is? I'm taking things as they, okay, all right. So the next item on the agenda is the Carver Urban Renewal Plan Update. This was a meeting that, that I attended on the seventh, I believe. So it was Tuesday of last week. Once again, it was a good meeting. What was shared was that we still have ways to go in this process. They're, they're looking that the zoning changes that they're needing for this property probably won't happen until the annual town meeting. They just have quite a bit of work to do on this. Still, the, what they had said that was interesting was on the, the day of the meeting, they had done a balloon test with the developer. And I guess it was, it wasn't open to the public. But they said that the people in the committee, that the scope of the project was, you know, they could really see how large of an area this was through that balloon test. They will be doing a balloon test again this fall that will be open to the public, that will be announced. And at that point, they will be disseminating a newer schematic of what the proposal is. So we will definitely let people know as, as that approaches. What was also, what I had shared with them was the number of homes in Plimpton that are going to be directly impacted by this. Just a quick look at the, the street listing, came up with about 75 households over Heather's Path, Montello, Toby, Lemuel Cobb, Maria Lane, and let's see, Simon Prospect and Thomas Blanchard. So there are about 75 homes that, that will be directly impacted by this project. The chair, Sharon Clark, asked me to provide her with that information, so I did. I did that this week. And also I provided her with the information that Alana had done for us about the possibility of closing Montello to through traffic. They were interested in that as well, and I told her that if that's something that, that they were, they wanted to explore further, we should probably talk with Amy Questle and get in, make sure that the information we have is the most up to date. So she'll continue to let us know when meetings are posted, they're open to the public. Kristin was there as well, but I don't think she's on the call. So it was basically just she and I from Plimpton, Kristin Bitchmeyer and, and myself that were in attendance from the town of Plimpton. So that's all I've got for that. More to come. We'll stay on top of it. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the review, approval and execution of a host community. Go ahead, John.
Okay, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So next item is the review, approval and execution of a host community agreement between the town of Plimpton and Sweetwater Grass LLC to operate a licensed Tier Three marijuana cultivation establishment to be solely limited to the indoor cultivation, processing and transportation of marijuana products and wholesale distribution of marijuana products for adult use on a parcel of land known as 77 Spring Street in Plimpton, Mass.
So this agenda item was brought forward by Selectman Russo and myself. We have been the main points of contact with Sweetgrass on this matter. And it seems to me that at this point in time, the draft agreement is in such a form that it is ready to be executed, should the board be so inclined. The agreement itself is the end product of a great deal of communication, not just with Mark and I and Mr. Rizzo, but also with counsel for each respective entity. And there's been a lot of kind of give and take on both sides. So I feel really good about this end product. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just underscore some of that. This is the result of a lot of work, especially Liz and Nick. And I, I really appreciate the tenor, the flavor of the negotiations. So I, I think this is a document that's fair to both sides. Plenty of protection for both sides and actually offers the opportunity for some financial gain for, for Plimpton, which would be very nice. I think it's a really solid arrangement. The industrial park is the exact right place for this project. And I offers the opportunity for kind of minimal impact to the town and definitely minimal impact to our citizens as well. So I, yeah, I'm very comfortable with the document. Nick was a fair but energetic negotiator. And actually, I, I was, I really appreciated the way he went about it. And I, you know, things can happen with projects like this, and there can be challenges along the way. But if there's anything I became comfortable with, I, I think we're dealing with really respectful, talented people who want to do the right thing. So I'm excited about the project and I'm excited about the document, and I hope we can move forward tonight.
Mark, did you want to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I ask a question.
Sure, absolutely.
Just reading what you have in the agenda, it says for adult use. And this is me thinking of lawyers. If, if the marijuana got into the hand of somebody who wasn't an adult, would that leave the town liable for anything? It's just that word being there. Town, town council approved of the language. I assume that was the case, but.
It's also wholesale, right? I mean, it's, it's not retail.
Well, and I think that there's provisions in the actual contract itself that talks about underage, you know, people that aren't of age, that are, if they were to access the, the marijuana, that there would be, you know, police involvement and, and reporting and all sorts of things.
And the town is not liable.
And the town is not liable.
Can't be named.
Yeah, that's okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's the critical thing.
And I was, I was happy to see that the two issues that I was probably most concerned about was the water use and the odor, especially the odor. Because as I read up on other parts of the country, that seemed to be a very big problem. So I'm happy that the wording seems correct that's in the draft. The rest of it, we had discussed before, and I'm glad to see it's pretty much the way we discussed it.
I might just put a little side note in there. I, the sweetest part of this agreement, even though it turned into 14 pages or whatever, is the annual contribution to nonprofits. So that's $5,000 that we get to decide on each year of Sweetgrass's money of any nonprofit or charitable organization in town. And that's a nice piece, and I think maybe that, maybe that's a model for other agreements along the way.
Yeah, Mark, I just want to say I love that part two, and I think that, that outlines a minimum, you know, but I hope to support all sorts of nonprofits in Plimpton and throughout the South Shore, because I think, I think there's a lot that, that businesses can do to support our community in that way. Thank, thank for bringing that up.
Good to hear that, Nick. Don't forget, this is being recorded.
I got it. Don't worry. Thanks.
No, I, I feel the same. I thought, after the initial read, we did have a lot of suggested edits, and it's nice to see that those were all incorporated and that you guys were able to come together. Yeah, particularly with the water and the, the odor concerns that, that we had to, to address those. So thank you. I think I look forward to working with you, Nick. And I think we're good, we're going to have a very good working relationship. So we're excited to have you come to town.
I think so too. Thank you for saying that.
All right. So do we have a motion to, to sign the, or execute the host community agreement between the town of Plimpton and Sweetgrass Farms LLC?
So moved.
Okay. All right. So the motion is second, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Yay. Thanks, Nick. Appreciate all your, you know, working with us on this and good things to come.
I agree. Thanks for all your support and talk to you soon.
All right. Good night. Okay, so next item on the agenda is old townhouse use and care. So Mark, John, who wants to take the lead on this one?
I'll take the lead on this since I suggested the agenda item. This has come up partly because the old townhouse has just been closed because of the COVID issue. But now that we've kind of opened up some things and the townhouse is being used, I wanted to address how we might move forward with using the old townhouse and specifically the, the fitness agenda that, for the senior citizens, and Colleen can also talk to this. I do want to address some of the things that have been do, done since we were last using it. Because we did have a problem where, one, there was the question of when it got plowed and how it got plowed and who was responsible for shoveling off the steps and the ramp that goes in for the whale chairs. And since then, the highway department has taken over the plowing as they do with the campus. So it's just integrated into that plowing system. Steve Saro, our custodian, has taken over the shoveling of the steps, making sure that it's clear so that if people use it, it's accessible and safe. Icing in the front parking lot had been a problem, and we had that issue where there was a problem where some people fell. One of the things that's been done is the gutters have been reversed so that the water flows towards the back, not towards the front. The problem is it's still a flat land. So the ultimate solution would be to get larger gutters on there that only flow to the back and only have a drain on the back. I have that on my house. So even though I show two gutters on the front of the house, the water only flows to one side and then dissipates out of there. We talked also about, we've been talking about this a little bit in the town planning properties committee. Suggestion would be to get a front door lock that would work with Wi-Fi so that we could, one, know who's going in there. We could assign individual numbers to the people. But also that would become the main entrance where, right now, they go to the back and come in through the back. The, let's see, the septic issue, and I think there was a issue that there appeared to be a septic issue. We did have a toilet system issue in the past, and this is back when Jessica Kinsman was president and when Jennifer and Jill took over. But that's been, that's been corrected, and I'm unaware that there's an issue there. As far as the septic system, I asked Steve Saro if he was aware of an issue with the septic system, and he said, no, he did not know that there was any issue with that. We did spend quite a bit of money on this, around $87,000 to do the painting clapboard restoration and window replacement through the Community Preservation Committee. So I would like to see us during the winter months, allow the fitness center or during the months when there's bad weather. Right now, they're working, you do their workouts at the Upland Club. But with colder weather coming, that's not always going to be available. I think if there's a really large storm, that's a major problem, we either would cancel the, the fitness center course that day, or we could potentially move it to the main townhouse and have it out of the conference room. So I know Shannon Maxwell is one of the members, as is my wife. Colleen, I know we've talked about it. Whether you feel this is the way we should go or not?
I think that they, this particular class enjoys using that room. As a resident of the town, I'd like to see the building back in use. I know that when I opened it up for the ice cream social, just, just to store my stuff there, you know, it smelled a little moldy and closed up. Old buildings don't like to be unused, and, and I think that it's incumbent upon us to put it back in use. As far as the, the fitness class going there, I think if they're going to a fitness class, then they're able to handle the stairs. So we don't need to worry about that. I think that we can be stricter with the instructor, and I'm willing to do that. You know, in the past, if I saw the light on over there, I'd go over and turn it off. But I'm willing to call her at nine o'clock at night and say, hey, you left a light on today. I'll go over and turn it off, but you know, you've got to do better. And every time you don't do it, you're going to get a call from me. And it may be nine o'clock at night, it might be 11 o'clock at night, until you, you know, get this under control. And the same thing with, if there are water bottles and trash left there, then, you know, this is all going to be the instructor's responsibility. She's the first one in, the last one out. She cannot let somebody else lock up for her. I, I think that we could produce a memorandum of understanding, which would more clearly outline this. I actually sort of put one together, and I think I just, I handed it to Bree. I forgot to send it electronically to anybody, which really just outlines who the contact is and that that person is responsible to follow the checklist at the end of the, of the day. And that's going to include having waivers from every participant, having each participant sign in for each class. And that list for each class will be sent to Bree that day. You know, just snap a picture with your, your phone and text to debris. Just so if something should happen, we have the information. It doesn't disappear this time. Yeah, and, and having a new and traceable lock on the door. I think that's a good thing. That some of the times when I've gone over to turn the light off, the code was left sitting on the code. I mean, the, the lock in the back is kind of a farce. It just, it's just been left open, really. So I think doing something with the locks is a good idea. And those traceable locks, as, as John Wilhelmsen pointed out, you can get them so that the face blacks out and it doesn't look like a modern contraption on, on the front door. So we can do it tastefully in terms of the history of the building. So it's really, I think that it's the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to provide a place for this group. You know, they're, they're part of our, our seniors. The seniors are a large chunk. In fact, all of us are members of that group, technically. So, you know, we have to provide things for, space for them to use. And if, if the townhouse is not available because the music is a little too loud at nine o'clock in the morning, then, then we have to open the townhouse for them, the old townhouse.
Okay, is this, this is Shannon. Do I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not sure when I'm supposed to speak up. But being there at these classes for the last 10 years has been incredible, however many years we've had it there. It's as few as seven people and as many as 14 senior women come, and it's, it's been great. And it's been very disruptive, I think, on our health. And now the fire department's got people coming in, trying to help us with our health. That'll certainly keep us moving. And the only other thing, if, if some of these little cameras that you have that, that show who opens the doors and not, we have, and I, this is in defense of all those of us who were there. We have all left with the lights off and come back on, and somehow or other, they have been turned back on. So I think having a secure lock that makes sure that people, other people, other than the class, cannot get in and out or make the lights turn out. You just, you'd have a group of very, very happy women if we could go back to working out in a building this winter and not in our bedrooms.
All right. Did anybody else have something that they wanted to add? Anyone? Okay, all right. Mark, do you have any thoughts on this? Mark, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I'm 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 generally, I'm I'm pleased with this, I I the issue that. That may not be the issue tonight, but that does kind of rear its head and that this discussion brings out a little is what is a town sponsored event and what's a private event and. I I think it's a can be a little bit of a quagmire. I I'm not sure that has to be addressed tonight. I I think we just have to be aware of the time may come, I mean, we've said we'd like this building used and I I think that's correct, but. You know, I I mean, what's the dividing line and someone comes to us and wants to do a wedding there, it feels to me that's something that probably. We wouldn't be interested doing that, we don't have the manpower, the women power to. Administer a lot of programs along the way, so again, that may not even be the issue tonight, but. As we hopefully continue to come out of COVID, I think that may come up more often. What sort of events are we comfortable having there, particularly what sort of private events do we feel like don't belong there?
I I think you're right, Mark, I think we don't need to address it today, but I also think we need to. Talk to peers in the other towns like Kingston, you know, and see what they do. You know, if they host events for residents where you can come in and do a wedding or whatever, kids program. How do they, how do they control that and maybe we just don't have the wherewithal because they're much bigger than us, but at least we need that discussion to take place.
So let me speak a little bit from my experience at the church and because Susan actually works at another church. You can require a single day insurance policy. And they can get single day insurance policies and name the name the town in that, so that would help with any liability issues. You can require a cleaning fee, you can require that they hire a cleaning company. You know, it's just how much you want to be involved and and have oversight of this sort of thing and it may just be. You know, a relatively simple thing to do, you have a checklist, do you have the insurance, did you hire one of these three cleaning companies, did you do that? But that would be for a private event rather than town sponsored and I guess you would have to decide, I think that. We pay the. Or we are going to pay and have in the past paid the fit instructor a stipend and I think that makes it a town event. You would have to decide whether the garden club is is a private event because it's not a town committee or. Or the historic society, whatever, whoever else is using it, you would have to draw that line of which is a town versus private thing.
We we already have a lease with the Plimpton Historical Society, I mean, we have even assigned rooms to them. So. As they get active, whenever that starts up. Certainly, we would expect to see them there anyways.
Well, my only concern is. It just seems like there's better places than the historic society building, whether it be. You know, the upstairs in the Upland Club or the church, it's just. I'm a little leery being that we still have a pending lawsuit with someone who fell and sued the town, so. I think that's a legitimate concern about the use of this building. And then another question is, so if these, if we're paying a stipend, are these instructors? So do they have to have their own insurance or are they covered under the town's insurance, do you know how that works, Colleen?
It's a little bit of both. They have an insurance policy, a liability policy, and the town is named on it. Originally, the town wasn't named, we kept on going back to them until. That was the case, so the town is named on the policy. And then, again, I I can only speak from my experience at the church. And you you just. You've got to put the buildings in use and and you do the best you can and you know, we have liability insurance for a purpose. Otherwise, you know, I I understand that rates go up every time we have a claim, but. Otherwise, we're just paying insurance for nothing and the buildings are not used. And then as far as holding it someplace else.
It's not possible.
Um, I just, I don't think it's right, I think what you're asking is a town group to. Find a private place to to. Have their their events. Yes, they could probably do it at the church, but the church would have to pay, have to charge them rent. And you know, I suppose the town could charge rent if they wanted to, but it's a town billion, it's in a town event. As far as the Upland Club, you know, I don't know, it it just seems. It just seems wrong to me for us to expect some other location to accept the liability that we're not going to accept.
Well, it's the stairs are a big problem and the Upland Club, it's just a much easier set of stairs and I think. The church is easier for people to get into as well, but.
There are steps to go into the front door of the historical society and the other steps and there is an electric chair if somebody wants to use it.
All right, thank you. All right, John, Mark, anyone else that would like to speak up on this? Officer Schustad, Ms. John Williamson, anybody? Okay, I don't want to not give someone the opportunity to speak.
I'll just note, Christine, if we are able to sort out the wifi issue there, there's other things we can do from a wifi perspective. With respect to the operation of the building nowadays, so you can not only can you do the front door, you could do the lights. And you could, you could look it up and you can turn things off remotely. But you know, we're a little ways from that, I think that the front, the lock on the front door would be a big step forward. You know, for not only for that building, but you know, getting to all of our buildings and having appropriate access and being able to control who's going where, when. Instead of keys that miraculously get copied or codes that are left out, you know, it's it's a. Since it, since I graduated college back in nineteen ninety-three, I've been operating with the with the badge key code since then, so it shouldn't be too hard to to get us to that. You know, it'd be good to get the building some usage again. And we still have a little more work to do on the windows, but you know, it's. It's a good solid building and you know, it's big stairs, but there is the chair and we fixed that. Year and a half ago with new batteries after the battery was discharged, so.
And John, the septic could handle the group, no problems?
I I don't, I was talking with Mr. Trainer about that, I don't remember septic issues, I remember toilet issues. And I, you know, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how much use it's actually getting anyways. So we, I I I'm not aware of a specific septic issue at this point. You know, I'm sure at some point there will be issues because there always are.
Yeah, okay.
But you know, it's it's really, it's not like they're there for the day.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, so John or Mark, what is the the hoped outcome here?
I hope that we can. Authorize the use of it by the fitness class. When, when the weather turns. So that they have a place to go inside that makes sense for them and. You know, I don't know if we need to vote or how we want to take that, but at least give it a try and. I think Colleen has been putting together all the things like the making sure that there's insurance and that the town is covered, etc., so. I feel comfortable that it. It makes sense, I think the town is protected to the extent we can and if there's anything else, we should do it.
You know, you have a group that. You have a group that decides on on when a building is open or closed and. You know, it's just a call to the instructor and says, no class today and she can call her. People and shut it down if if there's any question that that is going to be iced up and you're you're afraid.
Christine, I I think Bree wanted to say something.
Hi, Colleen just hit on the, it's, Colleen just hit on the part that I was thinking of, that if we are shut down due to weather concerns. All our town buildings would be shut down and there just would be no class that day. And the also suggestion I had was, what if you tried, did it on a trial basis for three months? And see how it did, you see how the building was kept. And it makes everybody happy a little bit, things go well, do it another three months.
Okay.
I I am willing to give this a try, I mean, I think we could go ahead with this one group, with this one project. I'm comforted by the fact that it sounds like Colleen is sort of administering it or overseeing it, we don't want to add to her burden, but. That's the piece I'm most concerned about is that we're not. Ending up with that falling on Liz or the selectmen or Bree or anyone else and. I, look, I think it's worth a try again. I I think, I I hope we're talking about this one group and this one project and see how this goes and. And then readdress it when and if other groups come up along the way.
All right, I like that, I like that, Mark, this one group. And I agree, I mean, we, it it's great to provide a space, a safe space for for our seniors to work out, it's definitely. You know, needed, it's exercise, it's social, there's so many benefits to getting together and. I just, my only concern was was whether or not this was the best place, but unfortunately, at this point in time, we're pretty limited with. With town buildings that that would be suitable for this. And I I wasn't aware that this was a council on aging sponsored activity, I thought it was more of a private. Group as well, so so that's good to hear that the council on aging is really the sponsor of of these activities. So that's correct, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Do you want?
John Schustad, did you have a?
If I could, just real quick, I'm not familiar with the lawsuit that the town has that you mentioned, I think I may be familiar with it, I think I might have been there. I was just going to see if if you do. Hold any type of events here, possibly just make sure the schedule is forwarded to a. Rob at the highway department so we can put a priority on sanding the lot there.
Thank you very much, that'd be great.
Good suggestion, John, okay, all right.
Do you have one, one other question, I'm sorry. Um, I think that now they meet two days a week, in the past, they met three, do you want to set a limit on? Do you want it to be only two or do you want it to leave it up to the classes aside if they want two or three days?
I'd be okay with leaving it up to the class, but I just would like to start with this, just one group, kind of as a test run. And see how things go, because I think there are other groups too.
Yeah, it will be a set schedule and so the highway department will know if it's Tuesday and the buildings are open, this class will be there. So, you know, we'll we'll get that sorted out.
Okay, all right, so Mark, do you want to make a motion or? John or me that we authorize them or do we just? I mean, we probably should should take a vote on this, shouldn't we?
I'll make a motion. I would think so.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we go with the trial period of three months that the fitness club. Has access to the. Old townhouse under the auspices of the council on aging.
John, when will they be starting, right away?
Ladies, maybe you can, Shannon, do you have a better idea, I assume you still want to meet outside whenever you can.
Yeah, we were, we've decided we'd stay as long as the weather was halfway neat because of COVID still being outside, but. We are, you know, we can start anytime because if it's pouring down rain, we need to go inside even if it's not cold, so. And right now, and I I'm sure we would like to go to three days, it's Wednesdays and Fridays right now and. I think day after tomorrow is Wednesdays if it's pouring down rain. I don't know how long it takes you to get the locks and things like that in, so. But yeah, I mean, we we will accommodate whatever you all come up with, but the sooner, you know. Sooner the better, I guess.
So so what if you just say?
This is Bree again. I'm sorry, this is Bree again.
Go ahead, Bree.
What I was thinking was, if we could have a set time of when we're going to start it, whether the weather is nice outside or not. And that way there, Steve is going to know when he has to go there and clean it. So if it wants to say October fifteenth, you could just, from that day forward, just all your classes could be outside, I don't know if there's. An area outside for you to use there at all, I don't know.
It's very, I'm sorry, I'll interrupt you, it it's very nice to be able to, we're going to go inside the building, there's air conditioning, there's open windows, it's nice. And that way, we don't have to decide whether we're going inside or going outside and that's the way it has been in the past.
Great, that's what I was thinking, do you just have a set there that you would go forward and I have the release form. Our council has approved, they said each member sign one and when it's a new member, just have the new member sign one and we'll keep a file on them.
Why don't you just say October first? Start, and then that way Steve can be aware and Colleen can alert the highway department and. Should be off running.
So the trial period would be ten one through twelve thirty-one.
Yeah.
Sure.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So I'll second the motion.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, a second, roll call and vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, all right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so next on the item, on the agenda is single precinct authorization form pursuant to MGL chapter fifty-four, section six. And this was at the request of the town clerk, looking for this. This authorization or vote. So is there anyone here to to speak to it?
Um, I can, I can give you the information that she gave to me.
Okay.
After the twenty census was completed. Essentially, our population does justify keeping us a one precinct town. And it would that way for the next ten years, so she is looking for you to. Approve of this at this evening's meeting and then there is a form. That I would say at least a couple of you should come in and sign. In Bree's office.
Okay, any discussion, John or Mark?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that the town of Plimpton has a single precinct. Pursuant to MGL chapter fifty-four, section six.
Second.
All right, roll call, vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay, all right, so next we're into some appointments, I'm sorry, ratification. Ratification of agreement with the town of Carver regarding animal control services, this was a. I think like a shared services agreement that that we had created with the town of Carver. For animal control and we're just looking for a ratification of that agreement.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, we're ratifying it, assuming that you vote favorably this evening and Rick Lithon, the Carver town administrator, was. Them ratify, I believe at their meeting last week. And then Greg Corbo said that we should be. Good to go as far as the animal control services are, both towns will submit each ratification to the state. And this, nothing is changing with the agreement itself, it's for school years and it's five thousand dollars per year for the services. Which is a significant savings for the town of Plimpton, as was discussed back during the budget season and everything.
Excellent, thanks, Liz, all right, any questions or concerns about this? All right, I'll make a motion that the town of Plimpton ratify our agreement with the town of Carver for animal control services. We have a second, all right, second, roll call, vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer? John?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, all right, very good, all right, so now on to appointments. So the first appointments are the police department and these are the first two, the sergeants, the ones that are retroactive?
Matt wanted all of them to be retroactive.
Okay, all right, so all of these appointments are retroactive to August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. So Sergeant Permanent Daniel Hall. So Sergeant Permanent, Daniel Hoffman, indefinite term. Acting Sergeant Matthew All, indefinite term. Full-time Police Officer, Matthew Turenzi, indefinite term. Special Officers. And these are annual appointments until six thirty, twenty twenty two. Nathan Christofori, Richard Glenn, Wendella Crafty, Scott Peterson, Ronald Clark, Cameron Broderick, Timothy Johnson, Gustavo Rivera, Gary Burlow, Thomas Reed, Lacy, I E, Nemo, man, I'm having work. Iro, Iro Nemo, I believe. All right. So I've got a motion for those Police Department appointments. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right. Other appointments to the Historic Commission, Jennifer McDonald, until six thirty, twenty twenty three. Historic Commission, Justin Shepherd, until six thirty, twenty twenty four. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, second roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, Liz, Town Administrator update.
So I had a meeting this morning with the town of Kingston. It was myself and the Kingston Town Administrator, our police chief and their police chief, and our Highway Superintendent and their DPW Director and Captain John Schusted from the Fire Department. This was to discuss Ring Road and the possibility for a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on that. If you recall from one of our prior meetings, the folks from Old Colony Planning Council had explained if we wanted the heavy truck traffic restriction on Ring Road, we would ultimately need cooperation in that process. After working through several kind of points of conversation on this, it was determined at this point in time, they are not interested in partnering with us for Ring Road. The main concern that they cited had to do with kind of having some unintended consequences as far as redirecting traffic from Ring Road onto some of their other roadways. Elm Street in Kingston was a particular concern to them. So they did not want to proceed at this time, but they are amenable to continuing discussions with us in the future if things maybe change. Also, relative to that, I am finalizing the letter that we would be sending to Mass DOT for the streets that the board had considered at that same prior meeting that do not require the cooperation of another community. In doing that and talking with Rob Furlot today and the other people in the room, Rob has pointed out that there's a portion of Main Street that's that Quateroy style road that he's looking to make upgrades on at some point in the future. And so he has some questions and he's trying to track down some information as to whether or not if we included that portion of Main Street in the exclusion, if it would preclude us from certain types of grant funding to make those repairs. So we just want to be certain that that's not the case and that we don't need to maybe take that portion of Main Street out of the exclusion for for the time being. We just want to be sure that there are no unintended consequences. So I've been communicating back and forth with Bill McNulty from Old Colony Planning Council. He's been tremendously helpful. He was answering different questions I had on and off throughout the day today. But Rob and I were looking if there is an issue with grant funding concerning that piece of Main Street, what else we might be able to do that still aligns with the spirit of what we were intending to do. And even involve adding Crescent Street and the Upland Road piece. So kind of taking a combination of the two alternatives and applying for it that way. So if it's okay with the board, and like I said, the letter is ready to go to Mastod, but I wanted to check with you this evening. If it's okay with you, I'd like to hold off on sending it and maybe have Rob attend our meeting on September twenty seventh. Just verify everything with the grant funding and all of the information from Old Colony and then make a decision if you want me to send the Mast DOT letter as is or if we want to take out the Main Street piece and add in Crescent and Upland. But I also, I know that this has been like a long time kind of in the making, so I'm not, I don't want to seem like I'm advocating to kick the can down the road for another two. But Rob brought that up today, and some of the folks from Kingston were kind of chiming in on that. And, you know, they thought that it could be a concern. And I think it might be easier if I just reach out to Bill McNulty as well by phone tomorrow rather than going back and forth over email. But Rob was gonna check with some contacts he has at DOT.
I think that's a really prudent approach is just making sure on the grants. And this has gone on for a long time. Another couple of weeks is no big deal.
I think that Quateroy Road could be very expensive, so we we want to make sure we understand what we can get and what we can't.
Yeah, I I agree. And it'd be nice actually to get an update on where we are with the safety zones from him on the twenty seventh as well. With painting and signage and all of that.
Okay, all right.
Right.
Plan for that then. And I'll have the Mast DOT, what I'll do between now and then, I'll have two versions of the letter ready to go so that depending on the outcome of the meeting on the twenty seventh, we can just send it out and and move forward either way. So we've been working with Select Energy. This has to do with the Power Purchase Consortium that you voted that we were able to join a while back called Power Options. So this would be for the rooftop solar panels at Denit, essentially to get a discount on their energy bill. We've been working through a lot of questions and options, and I think we're very close to coming to an end point on this. We're hoping that our council can communicate with them, get them a draft template of the pilot agreement. And assuming everything's a go with that, we would sign a new updated letter of intent with them that updates some of the rate information. And then we would have a pilot agreement. And that, John Wilhamsen, if you could just correct me if I'm wrong, is are we doing the selectman's signatures on this? Or would we also, would it be joint with school committee or would it just be school committee? I don't remember if we did that.
Matt Thomas had told me that it was joint.
Okay, that would make sense since
The selectmen and the school.
Controls the the school building. So we're hopeful that we're getting to an endpoint with that, and we can just get the project done because it does seem worthwhile. And, you know, the process has been taking a bit to kind of sort through. So that's moving forward.
Liz, can I just make one comment? So just so that the selectmen are aware, there was a, there was a big question about prevailing wage, all of this. And so and in and in the various draft agreements, there is options to be able to purchase the panels should they decide to sell them or to get them at the end. And we just pulled all that out. So, you know, they're not our panels. We're simply renting the roof. Right? That's all we're doing. And that that I think was one of the big log jams, because it was going to become quite a bit more expensive and a lot less benefit. So I think that's done, and we're hopefully just have some smaller items thrown out.
Yes. So we also had a successful meeting with the folks from Habitat for Humanity the other day, and we've kind of ruled out some of the properties that we were looking at. Some remain in the running. And so where we're at now, the folks from Habitat, they have an environmental professional on their team. So he's gonna go back and look through some of our old Conservation Commission data, some of our old Board of Health data, if there is any on some of these lots. And then once we narrow it down to the piece of land that would be worth pursuing a project of this nature, at that point, I think we need to put the brakes on with them specifically. And we need to get an RFP out there just in the event that there could be other nonprofit organizations or other quasi-public also have an interest in this. But the folks from Habitat have been very helpful for us as far as kind of working through these different pieces of town-owned land and what might be a viable option and what might not be. So those discussions are ongoing, and it seems like we're moving things right along with them. We're also in communication with GATRA. We're trying to iron out what the level of service would look like. We did have one idea that we had floated by them, but it sounds like the way that they staff it, it's actually with some town people. It's not just GATRA people making the doctor's appointments for seniors and kind of coordinating those schedules. So we're looking to see what the level of service would look like, and we also need to be sure that we can afford it. Because that number that would be going to them on behalf of the town is also tied in with what we were getting for the MBTA assessment. So we're trying to make sure the numbers work and get that ironed out. One of the pieces that they had inquired about was our Council on Aging, the large eight-passenger van. And we made a decision, those of us who are kind of loosely having these discussions with GATRA, so myself, John Trainer, Colleen Thompson, on behalf of the Council on Aging, Chief Silva and Captain Shersted. We think for now we want to retain full ownership of the eight-passenger van because we're not certain that we've realized its fullest potential. Like, we got the the van and COVID happened. Actually, we got it during COVID, a few months into it. So we want to be sure that we're not giving up ownership of that and not being able to have it as part of our fleet. We want to realize its full potential and then make a decision on that. But that is a service that GATRA offers. We could essentially sign that vehicle over and then they would be to provide us with with a much greater level of service. And they would take over all the maintenance and all of the Mast DOT reporting for that vehicle. So it is an option that would remain on the table, but I think for now we want to keep exclusively. And then otherwise, it sounds from the data that we're getting in kind of sporadic, it sounds like we're still right around a three percent positivity rate in terms of COVID nineteen. So that's still a factor. And then moving on to correspondence, we have a use of town property request from the Plimpton Boy Scouts. They would like to utilize the Fire Department property for a car wash fundraiser on September nineteenth from nine AM to noon. And then they have a proposed rainy of September twenty sixth. And Chief Silva has already signed off on this.
Is that it for correspondence? Okay, and your report? Perfect. Okay. All right. So we've got requests from the Boy Scouts to use Fire Department property for a car wash on nine nineteen. Chief Silva has already said he's okay with this. I'll make a motion that we approve the the Boy Scouts' use of the property with all the usual stipulations. Sign offs? Okay, roll call, vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Very good. All right. So the next item is the consent agenda. I would ask that we remove the minutes from nine to twenty one from the consent agenda, because I saw a couple of things that needed to be modified on those.
And I I I'd like to remove eight twenty three also a discussion point.
Okay, very good. All right. So on the consent agenda, we would be approving the minutes from eight twenty one as submitted. And I'll report on the warrants paid was the figure of thirty three thousand, seven hundred, seventy six dollars. This was, a majority of the money went to SERPED for the MVP, MVP grant for, when it talks it, it was legal fees, Verizon, trash removal, and Obushan. So I'll make a motion that we accept the items on the consent agenda, which is the eight eighteen, twenty one minutes, and the warrants paid. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, or I'm sorry, roll call, vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, Mark, do you want to do the minutes of eight twenty three with what you had?
Yeah, I I I I wrote these minutes. John had the suggestion that a citizen who had attended that meeting, that we include that in the minutes. And I'm totally glad to do that. I really, my question for the board, though, this citizen was at the meeting, did not speak during the meeting. And I I I'm not sure I want to start a precedent where, you know, we try to keep track in the minutes of everyone that can't comes on and comes off. So I I it felt to me like if they didn't speak to issues during the meeting, that there'd be no reason to to make that note.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I I, you know, I guess you're right. If they do speak, then we should capture them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad to put it in, and I, either way is fine, but just for future reference, I think.
Yeah, some of the big meetings, if we ever get back in public again, that would be awkward to try to get names of everybody.
Yeah, and it's actually just awkward to kind of see who came on or who, you know, they disappear before you necessarily know who they were.
Well, some people might want to be able to listen in on a public meeting and not have to identify themselves as well. So I think that that's good to not not set that precedent to that.
So other otherwise, I I thought the minutes of eight twenty three were okay.
I thought they were too. Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from eight twenty three, twenty one as as written.
Second.
All right, second roll call, vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, lastly, the minutes from nine two. This was the meeting where I had technical difficulties and John ran the meeting. So in the open session meetings, it said that I called, I opened the meeting. It was actually John that opened the meeting. And John declared that we would return to open session after adjournment. So basically, the the only changes needed are in that that first paragraph. So instead of me, it should be John Trainer.
Got it. Will do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from nine two with that with that change.
Second.
All right, roll call, vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. Now we're on to to rants and raves, but before we go there, I'll do a recap that our next meeting will be on the twenty seventh at five forty five. And on the agenda so far, we will have Rob coming in to meet with us to talk to about the Quateroy Road and the the truck exclusions with the board, as well as an update on where we are with the safety zone. So that's all that I'm aware of that's on that agenda so far. So on to rants and raves, John or Mark, did one of you want to go first?
Two things, I guess. Council on Aging was talking about, or was it GATRA talking? You, Liz, you were talking about contributing using residents as drivers. Right now, Council on Aging is having a problem with getting drivers for the meals on wheels. So something hopefully we can address because there, I think there, we're only supplying, Plimpton is only supplying two days of drivers where we used to supply three, I believe, is what I heard. So just to just to let you know, as far as my rave, it's kind of a sad rave, but Chief Silver and his crew did a wonderful job on the nine eleven ceremony. I mean, it was, we had a lot of participation from residents and we had a lot of participation from residents and, uh, I know he gets very emotional with it, but he is the guy to do it. And it was great.
Mark?
Um, yeah, my rave is, uh, just progress tonight on a bunch of issues. Um, nothing earth shaking, I suppose, but just progress on many issues kind of highlights the incremental nature of actually governing and, um, and I, the degree that with patience, progress comes. I'm appreciative.
My rave was along the same lines, just that, um, you know, despite, um, having to meet, uh, remotely, um, that, um, you know, we're still getting, um, work done. Liz is, and, uh, the people that are working in the town hall are getting, um, a lot of work done. Um, it's just, uh, we're very productive and it's pretty exciting. A lot of really great things on the horizon. I'm excited about this agreement with Sweetwater. I'm excited at, at the possibility of working with Habitat for Humanity or another nonprofit, um, for some affordable, um, uh, senior housing. It's great that we've worked out an agreement, uh, with the Council on Aging for exercise, which is so important to our seniors. So just a lot of great things. And then, you know, the Fire Department with the nine eleven and then all the groups that were up there, uh, involved with that, with the fair. So, um, it's, um, it, a lot of good things going on in Plimpton right now. It's fun to be part of it. All right. Very good. So, um, we'll see you all in two weeks. Have a wonderful evening. Good night, everyone. All right. So motion to adjourn at seven nineteen.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. All right. Good night, everyone.